A call of order. I did that. The roll call, Misty. Megan, can we do a roll call? Anybody?
I couldn't hear anything until just now.
Yes. All right. Megan, can we have a roll call?
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Ms. Quinell?
Here.
Mrs. Bishop?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Ms. Curler?
Here.
All right. So everybody's here tonight. Can you all please stand and join us with the -- for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The correction and approval of City Council minutes of November 16, 2021. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the November 16 City Council meeting.
I second.
So motion by Ms. Curler, second by Ms. Quinell. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, let's do a all in favor. Raise your hands. Aye. Great, 5-0. Correspondence. I'll start with the correspondence. I had a correspondence on mill pond concerns and also feedback from Public Works and Planning Commission members on some of their past meetings and issues coming forward. Steve, did you have any correspondence?
I just received the one email on the Sandy Beach looking for a champion.
Ms. Curler?
Yeah, the same meeting regarding the beach testing protocol, the email that we all got. I also got a separate email about Sandy Beach stormwater management and plantings and a contact regarding the Santa sculpture in Commons Park.
Yes. Ms. Quinell?
I concur with what has already been said, but I also received correspondence regarding the Barry Lucci Trust proposed zoning request and project.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes, I had correspondence regarding the mill pond, and I also had an email from Ms. Trier regarding changes to the Sandy Beach testing protocol.
All right. On the Santa Claus, I drove by that on the way in today, and it was nice to see that and wanted to thank the community members that did all the hard work and donated that to the city. So, thank you, and it's a great addition to the community. All right. So enter the question and public comment phase. We do not have any public hearings today, so the public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you've registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting laws discourages action by council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and filling out the sign-in sheet provided. Is there anybody that would like to address the council at this point? Yes.
Hi, my name's Mark Picard.
Mark, can you turn on the microphone?
Hi.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Mark Picard. I'm a Public Works Board member and a city resident living at 392 Brewster Drive. I'm speaking to you tonight on item 1B, the wastewater treatment plant. At the July 13 Public Works Board meeting, the wastewater treatment plant presentation was similar to what you've now seen, except projections were for 10 years and 20 years, not 40 years. The presentation also stated that option 3 was possibly the lowest present worth cost option on a 30- to 40-year basis. As a result of that meeting, the 40-year present worth cost analysis was done. Option 3 was, again, and perhaps a little surprisingly, still the most expensive option. Again, now, I think statements have been made that option 3 may still be the lowest cost option, projecting even further out. Of course, we don't have data on that. That projection has not been done. We haven't done a 60-year projection. What we do know right now is for 20 years and 40 years, option 3 is the highest cost. Option 2 is a lower cost. This treatment plant decision is a large decision. You, the City Council members, are the decision-makers on this decision. I ask that you make this decision based on the data available and not on conjectures and hypotheticals. Though this is a discussion item tonight, no treatment plan -- plant planning is likely already moving forward based on the split Public Works Board 3-2 decision. Even though the council cannot make a formal decision tonight, your feedback to city management and strand engineering would very likely be helpful in that planning process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Picard. Any questions? Thanks. Anyone else? All right. Let's move to item 7 on the agenda, which is the city manager's report. Mr. Wilkie?
The report included the general fund check register, the monthly voucher summary, the utility check register, and the monthly voucher summary for the utilities. Are there any questions? I'm not going to answer them anyway as Betsy is, but I get to ask.
Is there any questions on those items on the agenda?
Other than that, I don't have anything else to add.
Can we get an EMS update? I know that wasn't on your agenda, and it's not listed, but I -- it's kind of an important issue and just kind of wondering where we're at there.
I have a meeting scheduled with them tomorrow, and they are still working towards getting an audit prepared, so I guess we'll see what happens. But tomorrow's meeting is mainly on contract language, so we'll see where that goes. I imagine we'll talk more about it on the 21st, but we'll see what happens here.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Seeing none. Move to the Councilmember Board Report and Acceptance Minutes from the Library Board of October 18, 2021, and November 8, 2021. Parks Boards of October 20, 2021, and Police and Fire Commission of October 21, 2021. Is there any reports or further explanation from council members on any of those meetings? Yes, Mrs. Curler.
I'd just like to pass along to my fellow council members that the community survey that the library board was working on is now out for public comment. So it's a survey asking people's input on potential expansion of the library. So you saw that reflected in those minutes, and it is now available. It's on the library's website. The library director also circulated it broadly to email addresses that were in their system as well as on Facebook. So the library's website is www.lakemills.lib.wi.us, and the initial deadline is December 15. And I think Gerard is thinking he may extend that if he feels that there's, you know, more people that haven't had a chance to participate yet. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah. I was going to let you know that with the Parks Board meeting, the Commons Park discussion about renovations and grant proposal usage is within the context of redoing Commons Park through phases. At this point, we're looking at -- we were looking at how exactly to handle the Veterans' Memorial, and through Eric decided that the Parks Board -- Parks Director, that the idea of moving the memorial or doing something to elevate it would cause quite a bit of a problem. So we're revamping that idea, and the Parks Board will be bringing a proposal to the City Council on what that will look like for the first phase of Commons Park revamp.
Do you know roughly what the timeframe is on that?
I do not right now. I know that we had someone come in and draw up a design, so I think the next board meeting that we have, we will have another design proposal, and I think after that is when we'll bring it to the council.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, except those minutes into -- I guess we accept them into our -- what's the wording I'm looking for? Accept them into our agenda. Thank you. Moving forward with the council business. Item A. We have a license application by Hometown Grocery Incorporated, doing business as Lake Mills Market. This includes tobacco weight and measures and Class A retail liquor, Class A retail fermented malt beverages, and appointing Steve Burkhardt as agent. So this is due to a change of ownership, so we're going through this process to change the paperwork to reflect that. So we have a action item of City Council Motion 21-12-1-1. Can I have a reading of that? Megan?
Motion 21-12-1-1, authorizing the granting of license applications by Hometown Grocers, Inc., DBA Lake Mills Market, 375 West Tyranina Park Road, to include retail cigarette and tobacco products, weights and measures, and Class A retail liquor, Class A retail fermented malt beverages, and appointing Stephen Burkhardt as agent.
All right. Can I have a motion on that?
I move to approve motion 21-12-1-1, authorizing the grant of a license application by Hometown Grocers and appointing Stephen Burkhardt as agent.
I'll second.
So motion by Mrs. Bishop, and a second by Mr. Fields. Any discussion on that from staff?
The one thing I want to say is tonight's Mitch's retirement party over at the Griss. I'm sure that they'll need a liquor license for that. Megan, do you have anything to add on that?
The party?
No.
Oh, okay.
On the licenses.
I don't.
All right. Thank you. I don't either. It's just a standard process for change of ownership.
Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none. Can we have a roll call on motion 21-12-1-1?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinell?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passed 5 to 0.
Thank you. All right. Moving forward to item B, discussion on wastewater treatment plant facility. So this is a discussion item, and I believe we have a speaker tonight from Strand. If you can -- I got the first name Travis, but I am sorry, I missed the last name. Go ahead and introduce yourself.
Yes, I'm Travis Anderson from Strand Associates. I'm an engineer, and I've been working on the evaluation of the different wastewater treatment plant discharge options, and I'll be going through a presentation summarizing that evaluation.
Thank you.
And before I get started, I guess I just wanted to make sure, Steve or Paul, do you have kind of any opening remarks that you wanted to make, or do you want me to just go ahead and dive right into this?
I didn't think that there would be anything. We've already talked about the wastewater treatment plant at some level, and I'm sure that they've at least done some investigation at the Public Works Board. Probably should note that we have met with the DNR since, and we were originally thinking about making this a discussion decision tonight and pulled that off the agenda and went with just this. The DNR wants us to do more analysis on options 2 and 3, and so we're going to have to provide that. So we may not see this as a decision until February. But one of the issues that we were trying to drive for is the MDV, the multiple discharge variance, and the permit that we have to have for the wastewater treatment plant. The sooner we have an option and we can start preparing, the better it was, so that's why we're trying to get -- so we talked about that with the DNR, and they were like, "Do the work first." So that's where we're at.
And Steve, would you like me to just run through the whole summary, given the conversations you've already had? Okay. So I'm just going to start with a little bit of background and discussion on some of those recent activities that the city staff in Strand have had on this topic, give you guys an overview of the population projections that were done for the evaluation, and review the three different options that have been evaluated, including the non-monetary evaluation and the cost evaluation. And then we'll wrap up with the summary of the meeting that we had with DNR and our schedule and next steps. So Strand and city staff have been working on a facility plan for the wastewater treatment plant that summarizes the needs for improvements at the wastewater plant based on the age and the capacity of the existing equipment and infrastructure that are there. And based on the constraints of the site that are shown in the aerial photo here, there's limited space available remaining at the existing plant location. So it was requested that we look at different options to confirm the best long-term strategy for the treatment plant. So we also wanted to evaluate costs over a longer timeframe. Typically, DNR will use a 20-year planning window, and because of the constraints that the site is facing, we wanted to also look at a 40-year timeframe and account for those age and site conditions. And ultimately, the goal of this evaluation was to look over the benefits, costs, and determine the potential timeframe for constructing a new treatment plant on a different site. Okay. So the first step in this process was to review population projections, and the typical way of doing this is to use the data that's provided by the Department of Administration on population projections, and for Lake Mills, that is about 1% growth annually. We also wanted to do a sensitivity analysis to determine what the impact would be if growth were to occur faster than that. And for that, we used an average rate of 2.5% growth annually, and that would be equivalent to the fastest-growing communities and suburbs surrounding Madison, so communities like Wanakee, Fitchburg, Verona are growing at that approximate rate of 2.5% annually. So in that way, we bracketed a range of growth from the current rate, which is about 1%, up to the highest rate that is occurring in this area of the state. And then we use those populations to project out the flow and loadings that would go to the wastewater plant, and this table just shows the range of those flows. So the flow is the volume of wastewater that they'd receive, and then the -- all of these loadings are the strength of the wastewater. And both of these have an impact on the size and the types of equipment that would be used. We also engaged DNR regarding the effluent limits that the plant would have. We wanted to confirm that the current limits would remain in effect moving forward, and the initial limits that came back from DNR were a lot more strict than the current limits, and that was going to require even more significant upgrades. So we had a little back and forth with DNR and requested a recalculation for Rock Creek, which is the receiving stream, based on a different flow value. And we also requested limits for the -- going to the Crawfish River rather than Rock Creek. Crawfish River is a lot larger, and it has a lot more dilution available and therefore has less strict limits.
Let me ask just a question about the limits, the effluent limits. What is it that triggers a change in the limit requirements? Is it any time that there is going to be a change in the facility, or is it changing regulations, or maybe it's both?
It's primarily been changing regulations. So for example, the new phosphorus limits are due to a change in the state regulations that were passed back in 2010. Even though that was 11 years ago, there's been a compliance schedule in place that has given facilities time to make those upgrades. And then it also has to do with changes in stream conditions. For example, the flow rate in the stream changes that can have an impact on how the limits are calculated.
There's the possibility of things like the stream reclassification, changing our limits, and then it's like the lateral services, you know, that some strange thing happened somewhere, and now all of a sudden we've got all kinds of new conditions that would be applied. So those are things that also would hit it.
Yes. Yep, exactly. So these are the three different options that were evaluated, and they all have different limits that would impact the type of treatment that would be used. And the most strict limits are under option 1, which is staying at the current site and continuing to discharge to Rock Creek. And important to note, under option 1, is this phosphorus limit that would go from a current limit of 1 mg per liter to a future limit of .075, which is a very strict limit that would require advanced filtration to be used. The advantage of pumping to the effluent to the Crawfish River, even if the treatment plant stays where it's at right now, is that that phosphorus limit of 1 mg per liter would remain in effect. And then the least stringent limits would be construction of a brand-new plant that would discharge to the Crawfish River. So again, the options that are evaluated were to stay at the existing site is option 1. Option 2, stay at the existing site but construct a pump station in Forest Main that would pump that effluent to a new outfall on the Crawfish River. And then option 3 is construction of a new plant at a new location on the Crawfish River. And we evaluated three sub-alternatives for option 3, looking at various technologies. Because the last major upgrade at the plant was more than 30 years ago, most of the equipment and the infrastructure at the plant needs improvements. So under option 1, there would need to be significant upgrades due to the age condition and the capacity of the existing equipment. So really, all the processes would be touched in some way in this option, including the influent pumping, a new oxidation ditch, a new final clarifier. There's new sludge storage that will be required, conversion to UV disinfection, and then filtration to accommodate that stringent phosphorus limit. And then option 2, you really have all of the same needs as option 1, but again, this option would allow for that less stringent effluent limit, especially for phosphorus, and it would also likely have less stringent limits in the future, just like Steve was talking about. If Rock Creek were to be reclassified, there would be very strict limits put in place even beyond what the plant has right now. So this is likely a good long-term compliance strategy going to the Crawfish River rather than staying on Rock Creek. And then option 3 is the brand-new treatment plant. And again, we looked at three different technologies. We wanted to review several different options to determine if new technologies that are emerging would be beneficial from a cost standpoint. So just briefly, option 3A is a new oxidation ditch plant, so that's very similar to what the current treatment plant has, except biological nutrient removal would be designed into this process, so that covers both phosphorus and nitrogen removal. And this is important because we've been told by DNR that nitrogen limits will very likely be coming within the 20-year planning period. So whereas the plant is currently facing a compliance schedule for phosphorus, it's likely that nitrogen will also have a compliance schedule in the near future. And then biosolids dewatering is included to allow for greater flexibility. Right now, the treatment plant only has liquid sludge storage. Option 3B is similar to option 3A, but uses a conventional activated sludge system that just allows for smaller tanks compared to an oxidation ditch plant, but it would be designed similar to allow biological nutrient removal, just like option 3A. And option 3C is an emerging technology. There's about half a dozen aerobic granular sludge plants in the country now. There are several benefits to this technology. It has a smaller footprint, and it has -- the process promotes biological nutrient removal with less infrastructure, and it's a more modular system that would allow simplified expansion in the future if flows and loads were to increase due to, let's say, more significant industry moving to the area. So there are pros and cons to each of these three options, and we're talking about the benefits first. So the main benefits of staying at the existing plant and continuing to discharge to Rock Creek are that you already have a significant investment in the existing infrastructure at the plant, and even though I mentioned a lot of the equipment needs to be replaced and expanded, there is still a lot of infrastructure there that would be reused, and it does require the least amount of pumping, and obviously, it's very familiar to the current operations staff. The main benefit of going to the Crawfish River is the less strict limits, both now for the phosphorus limit and very likely in the future for other limits such as ammonia. And there's a lot of benefits to constructing the new plant, so we'll just run through those. As I mentioned, the Crawfish River is a lot larger body of water. It has a lot more dilution and assimilative capacity available, which makes the limits less stringent. This location would be much better able to address future growth in the city and future effluent limits. Just having the space available will provide a lot more flexibility if flows and loads continue to increase. It will provide a buffer between the treatment plant and the residences. With the construction of the new oxidation ditch at the existing site, that ditch will be only 50 feet away from the nearest residential homes that are there. So a new treatment plant away from residential and commercial areas would obviously provide that buffer. It's likely that at some point in the future, the first thing that would have to happen is biosolids storage would have to move is biosolids storage would have to move off-site in a different location from the existing site, just because they're running out of space. So a new treatment plant would be able to keep all the processes on one site. The new site would be more easily, would more easily serve any growth that were to occur north of the interstate. They're just, because of the location of it, there would be less infrastructure required to serve that new growth in that area because the new plant would likely be located in that area along the Crawfish River north of the interstate. There's the potential to improve Rock Creek. Again, it's a much smaller stream, so it's more impacted by the treatment plant effluent. A new site allows for newer technologies that might become available. And again, it provides more space for future expansion.
I have a quick question for you. You had mentioned that the aerobic process in option three C has more, less of a bio footprint. And then we are also hearing about the biosolids that right now our treatment facility doesn't quite have room for. What I'm wondering is, would this, would option three C decrease the amount of biosolids needing to be stored? Or is this necessarily, answer that, I guess?
Sure. There would be roughly the same amount of biosolids from that process as, as the current process, except that any of the options evaluated under option three would include biological nutrient removal, which would reduce the amount of biosolids. But that, that isn't specific to only option three C. That would be any of the, any of the treatment technologies under option three.
Okay, thank you.
So discussing some of the drawbacks, as I mentioned, there likely need to be land acquisition for biosolids management and potentially a new site in the future, depending on how quickly growth occurs. You'll have the most strict phosphorus limit at the existing site. The, we are still working through the multi-discharger variance eligibility for phosphorus on the existing site. There is a, there's an old landfill which will complicate construction. In the previous major upgrade in the early 90s, the material from the old landfill was kept on city property. We would need to work with DNR to determine their exact requirements for any future projects as far as how that landfill material would be handled. But that is an additional complication that would need to be addressed with continued expansion on the existing site. And then because of the space constraints, any expansion is going to make future projects that much more difficult, just because there, there's just such limited space remaining. There are the same drawbacks for option two, staying at the site and pumping to the Crawfish River, except now you have to add effluent pumping onto those drawbacks. And then the drawbacks of option three are primarily monetary because it is the highest cost option before taking into account any of these non-monetary benefits and drawbacks. You'd have to site the new plant, which, you know, may have certain challenges to it as well because of setback distances required by code. And again, it would require a pumping station from the existing site. And I just want to note here, the, the monetary drawback, the farther out you look into the future, the, the less that becomes an impact. The costs become closer together and, and you'll see that in the, the monetary analysis that's next.
Can we go back to the last slide quickly?
Yes.
Okay. So for the new treatment plant at Crawfish River, we also have the same drawbacks as for the existing plant in your middle column, where we have effluent pumping required and also easements, right? Like those same drawbacks carry over to the new plant?
Yes, yeah. Because eventually, if, if the, the plant stays where they're at right now, at some point in the future, you'll need to move. It's just a matter of when.
Okay. And then for your last block there in that third column, requires pumping station at existing site. Are we not fully decommissioning the existing site? Are we only putting the pumping station there? Does the existing site stay in some capacity? How does that work?
There would need to be a pumping station at the existing site. The rest of the plant could be decommissioned. So most of the space would become available, but there, there would need to be a secure building there for the pump station.
Could the pumping station theoretically be anywhere?
The, the best place for it would be on that, on that existing site where it currently comes into the influence structure there, just because that infrastructure is already there.
Okay, thank you.
In the long run, though, you could gravity flow all the way down to the new plant at the Crawfish along the Rock Creek, right? You wouldn't necessarily need to have a pumping station there all the time. The reason you're doing a pumping station is to avoid the significant infrastructure investment upfront.
Yes, yeah, exactly.
But in the long run, you could eliminate that pumping station and it would all gravity flow. That's why we were looking at areas around Rock Creek and the Crawfish is because obviously the creek flows that way. So the grades allow for sanitary sewer to grade that way.
Thanks, Steve.
Can I just add a couple of things there? That cost of that sanitary sewer, there would be a cost to running that sewer, to move the, the pump station to a different location. And then secondly, I'd like to go back to Lisa's question earlier. And I'm not sure if we touched on it, but a WPDES permit is typically, correct me if I'm wrong, is five-year periods?
Yes.
So you're looking at a reclassification at a minimum every five years, if there's not something else that drives another change.
Regardless of looking at, you know, facility upgrade or a new facility, every five years there can be changes in the limits. That's what you're saying? Yeah.
Correct.
One of the things you'll, you'll probably want to tie together is the requirement to allow a certain amount of flow through the dam all the time is because of the wastewater treatment plant. So that could change if you took the wastewater treatment plant off the creek. So let's say that we were looking at an industrial park on the north side. You probably have a pretty good significant piece of infrastructure coming out of the wastewater treatment plant to some point along Rock Creek. And so the lift station may be shortened up or, so how you look at what's developing, where it really has significant impacts, what we're going to term unquantified benefits in the long run. So you, there are things that you want to think about as you start tying these together is that there's, there's a lot more than just the wastewater treatment plant and the finances related to the wastewater treatment plant. There are other things that we do as a city that will be impacted.
Okay. So taking a look at the capital costs, the solid bars on this graph are that DOA projection or growth at 1% annually. And the hatched bars are the high projection, the high-growth rate projection. And you can see that no matter what, there is a significant amount of capital investment that's required to update the existing site because of those capacity and age and condition can, at the, at the existing site. And option two is, is basically adding in the cost of that pump station in Forest Main. And then option three, you would have the cost for the, the full, full new treatment plant. And the different technologies all came out to roughly the same cost. I would say at a planning level that those were all approximately equal. And then we also looked at total present worth. And this takes into account all of the operation and maintenance costs associated with the alternatives. So the, things like the energy use, chemical use. And then we also looked at salvage value of the structures, repair costs to come up with a total present worth in today's dollars, looking at both a 20-year projection and a 40-year projection. And again, like I was just talking about, if you compare the 40-year present worth, you can see that the costs begin to become more comparable before the, for the three different alternatives. So the, the graph we were just looking at is for the DOA projection. And then the high-growth projection is shown in this graphic. And the, the trend is similar. As you look farther out and at higher growth projections, the, the difference, especially between option two and option three, begin to become close on a total present worth basis. We also wanted to look at the preliminary rate impact for the different options. And I'd want to point out that option, oops, option one and two would have the potential for phasing. So some could be constructed now and some could be constructed in approximately 10 years. But it would be difficult to phase option three because a lot of the plant would have to be all built at once. And just comparing the different options, going from option one to option three would be about a $300 per year difference. And it would be about a $200 per year difference going from option two to option three. And again, we haven't included any potential grants or debt retirement or anything like that into this evaluation, just for ease of comparison between the different options.
Travis, can I ask just a clarifying question on this, the rate change? So say, we decide to build a new plant, the, the increase for, say, an individual household, they're going to be paying $300 a year more in their, in their rate? And then for how long is that? Is that until, you know, is there a debt service time period that that applies to?
Sure. So the, the current rates are shown in this black bar here at about $500 per year. And without any phasing, what we're showing is that would increase to almost $1,000 per year under option one. And up to about $1,300 per year for option three. And that is assuming a 20-year clean water fund alone at the current interest rate, which is, which is very low right now. It's less than 2% interest rate right now for clean water fund loans. All right. So we wanted to get DNR input on this topic early. We had a recent meeting with them going over all this information. And DNR typically requires the lowest cost alternative based on that 20-year total present worth evaluation. They do require environmental evaluations and non-monetary evaluations in their facility plans. And on a case-by-case basis, they will approve alternatives that are not the lowest cost option. They've indicated that, that alternatives that are 10 to 20% higher than the lowest cost option can be approved. So they requested that further evaluation on these costs and monetizing some of these non-monetary factors, that that would be necessary for the DNR to approve a facility plan that was recommending option three. And I want to point out that the non-monetary impacts that we've been discussing were not monetized in the original evaluation. So the, some of the downsides, such as the risk of more stringent limits in the future, risks of greater costs from the landfill, the additional costs that there might be for infrastructure in areas of new development, such as north of the interstate, the, the impact of having new structures built right next to residences, and any sunk costs in the existing treatment plant, and then having to construct a new plant later. All of those non-monetary impacts are, are not included in the capital and total present worth evaluation that I, I just went through. So though, these factors could be monetized to accommodate the, the risk of some of these items. And that would increase the costs of option one and two. And they would be closer to the cost for option three. So this table just shows the schedule and next steps. There's been a lot of work done to date, a lot of discussion on this topic already. Kind of in the middle of the table here, we have tonight's meeting. We've, we've already had a lot of meetings and discussion with DNR on, on this topic. The, the next step is to determine the direction as far as which option gets selected. And, and then the facility plan would be finalized based on that selected option. And then there are several steps that would need to occur in early 2022 to complete the facilities plan, including having a public hearing to, to go over the details of the project. And ultimately, to stay on schedule, design would need to proceed in order to meet the DNR's compliance schedule of October 31st, 2025. So that is, that's all the information that I had to present. And I think we can open it up to general discussion. If you want me to backtrack to any of these slides or have any questions, we can go through those.
Let's go into a question and answer session right now. Any questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Can I go first? Can you go back to the slide that has preliminary rate impacts and considerations? And I noticed you had mentioned that our current rates right now are $500 a year for the way that it's looking. Either, whatever option we choose, one, two, three, we're looking at, at the, at the least 100% increase in rates. Is that what I'm seeing on that chart?
So without any phasing for options one and two, that, that's correct. The improvements that have been identified for staying at the existing plant would not have to happen all at once. They could be phased to do half of the improvements within the next few years and then the other half 10 years from now. So that would, that would cut that rate increase down because you would only be borrowing for that first part of the improvements.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, because I'm a homeowner here in town, and to see a 100% increase in my, in my water costs with not much of an improvement in the wastewater treatment plant, I would be a little like upset about that. Because overall, I think a lot of people don't understand what the wa, I mean, they know what the wastewater treatment plant does. We all do. But seeing the investment that we're going to be considering here, I think they're going to need to know a little bit more about the benefits of it. So what I'm, what I'm wanting to hear you say is, I guess, are more information on how the increase can be supported with information that will help a citizen understand what it is that they're getting out of their investment.
Sure. So, so replacement of all the different equipment that is now, that does not have sufficient capacity capacity, and, and just general age and condition due to being, due to being 30 years and older, that's the main driver for all these needs for replacement.
Prior to the-
Let's, let's back up, though, first.
I was going to ask you a question, but go ahead.
The $500 increase per year is that plant, the existing plant, it's to meet the current, the upcoming permit. So if you want to have a wastewater treatment plant, which we are going to be required to have, you have to do this. There's no option. So you have the $500 directed to you by the state of Wisconsin through the U S E P A. That's our requirement. We're going to do that no matter what. The question is, is do we do the rest of them? The benefits are that you get to have a wastewater treatment plant, so when you flush your toilet, it works, and those types of things. So it's a, it's kind of hard to go back and quantify. You have a bunch of new equipment, but, but they'll all have new equipment. The, the benefit of the other ones is, is are they going to have a longer-term benefit? Are you gonna, are you gonna lose your sunk costs, and what timeline are you going to lose your sunk costs? If they reclassify that creek, if they crank down the limits, if for some reason we start, start having a lot of years like this year where there's no flow coming out of Rock Creek, you're going to find that they're, they're, they're going to be, the waste, our existing wastewater treatment plant, under any conditions, will not function. And that's what you're trying to evaluate, is that new plant, where you have all the stuff at one point, and you can use it, then it's got a long life ahead of it, versus the existing one, and are you going to get your sunk costs out of it?
So I was going to ask you, Steve, because you're the historian here, with regard to, I know that he mentioned that 30 years ago is when we last did improvements on it. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
That was the last major upgrade. There's been some improvements that have been done. There was a project about eight years ago that was done, but it was much smaller in scale than compared to the project 30 years ago. Most of the equipment and infrastructure at the plant dates back to that 1990 project.
Okay. So prior to that, what was the first, what was the, the improvement prior to that? I'm just trying to look for longevity of investment. You know what I'm saying? Like, if, if, if the last time we did it was 30 years ago, that's a pretty decent investment in, in, in time. Are we certain that building a new wastewater treatment plant, for instance, in the way that they're doing it, is it going to, investment time period, is it going to get us 30, or even better, more years?
I, you're not going to get 30 years. You might get 20, which is, which is, you know, if you got 20, you'd be doing pretty good, I think. The previous plant before this one lasted, what did it, what last, Dwayne, five years?
I was just going to look it up, but I-
It wasn't very long. We, we doubled down. We actually had one plant that we built '85, '86, I think. And we had to build a new one again because that plant wasn't meeting the permit requirements. So in '90, we built another plant. So if you go back and look, our wastewater rates just skyrocketed in those five years. And so it was, yeah, I'm going to say that, but that was, that wasn't necessarily a permitting requirement. That was a design feature that didn't, didn't go around. So-
Okay.
I think we have, what do they call those? What's Johnson Creek got, rotating something?
I have a lot of things coming through.
Yeah. So it was a difficult time then, you know, to have to have two plants right away. There was a lot of criticism. But this one lasted 30 years and could, could definitely go another 20 years. I'm not going to deny that. Our biggest risk is reclassification or, or permit changes, which is, you know, your limits, phosphorus, nitrogen, whatever else they decide to, to start screwing down on. And they change so fast. I mean, 10 years ago, nobody thought lead lateral services was an issue. Now, all of a sudden, we're spending billions of dollars on lead lateral services. So it's a, it's a situation where you, you at least want to evaluate and quantify as many benefits as you can to having the long-term benefits. Because I guarantee you, patience in paying now and, and taking the benefits that will accrue 20 and 30 and 40 years from now, well, will pay off big. So you want to, you want to make sure you know what you're doing when you do it. That's why we, we sat down and have had conversations with the D and R. That's why we've been talking about this internally, pretty extensive, and why we, we want to pay attention and try and quantify, work with the D and R to quantify what the, the non-monetized benefits are going to be, because they're, I think some of them are huge.
And I certainly don't want to disagree with you on the internal conversations, because I cer, I do not know enough to speak on what a wastewater treatment plant does by any means. That's not my expertise. What I am looking at is this chart, and I'm looking at the cost increase, seeing that option one, especially focusing on the, the orange dotted line there, the increase from option one to option three is $300 a year. Is that to mean that we are already needing to do the investment in option one and then consider option three? Or is this a situation where we will jump to option three, which would be then, from my math, in my elementary years, $800 a year?
You've got it correct.
I just wanted to be clear.
Yes, the, the jump to option three.
Okay.
Yep.
Can I just add something here quick? This is Paul. You can hear me, right?
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
I'm sorry, thank you. I just don't want to lose sight of the fact that the reason the D and R is changing some of the parameters, some of the affluent parameters, is environmental. And so certainly, one of the benefits of improving or going to the Crawfish River is to protect the Rock Creek, protect the crawfish. I don't think we should lose sight of the fact that that's really one of the big drivers here, is to be environmentally sound here in what we're doing. And then the other thing is, we know that we're experiencing some growth right now. The plant is keeping up quite well. It's, it's doing well in that regard. But there's kind of a, a difficult philosophical question that we've been discussing, too, and that is, how fast and how is the community going to grow? Are we going to be very residential? Are we going to be seeking out more industry, that sort of thing? And so that, that's something else that probably has to be folded into the discussion at some time. And how will we position ourselves for whatever we want to be? And I, I don't want to lose sight of those two discussion points as we're looking at the cost and the options and that sort of thing.
Yes, Ms. Kurler.
I'd just like to, I guess, ask some follow-up on the timeline, and maybe it's just to reinforce my understanding, whatever, whatever one's talking about, and then also ask about financing. So it, it sounds like, in response to Michelle's questions, there, there's two drivers to having this discussion now. One is the aging, you know, infrastructure at the existing plant, but it sounds like that's, maybe could last a while longer, and really, the driver that is setting our timeline is the phosphorus limits. Is that correct? So we have three years to meet the, four years to meet the phosphorus limits?
Phosphorus and probably nitrogen, too.
Okay.
But it's the, what's driving us now is the permit, which, two of the big items on it are, well, the one big item is for phosphorus, but then it's to evaluate, you know, what your plant can do and why, and how it's going to be used in the future.
And, and it's October 2025 was the compliance date, so that's in our current permit, it sounds like, that, so whatever we decide, we have to do it in a timeline that we can achieve that, that timeline. So the other, the options two and three that are more costly, and particularly option three that cannot be done in phases, is it, is it legally possible, or, or is it a sound idea to begin to raise rates in anticipation of those increased costs so that it doesn't hit people so hard? Or is that just not the proper practice?
You can with wastewater, it's not in, under the P S E. We haven't done a lot of wastewater rate adjustment in 30 years. I think we've done two, particularly because the rate had been so high. And so they had kept up relatively well. We didn't have, we had a lot of conversation about infrastructure and related infrastructure to the North Side development. In fact, we have a lot of easements and, and a lot of the infrastructure right up against the edge of the interstate. The, the question then, all of a sudden, started to be, well, why bring it all the way back? Does, if ultimately, we need to send it all the way down? And so that was why the conversation started pushing towards, well, what if we build a plant on the crawfish? What are our benefits? And, and immediately, the permits started to stick out to us huge. I mean, there's no doubt in my mind that your permits are going to get squeezed a lot in the next 20 years, and the benefit of being on the crawfish in that case is just huge. The infrastructure in the long run will be a benefit, too, because you've then got a plant that's in an area where you can expand and do whatever you need and plan out for the future. And it's also in the right spot that you can ultimately gravity flow all of it to the right spot. So the idea needed to be investigated and reviewed, and we need to, you know, probably spend more time figuring out what the non-monetaries are. But is it the only answer? No. Might it be the best one in the long run? Probably, but, you know, as of the time, I don't know.
You want to go ahead? Okay, Ms. Bishop.
Yes. Regarding option 3C, you said the granular system was pretty new, had about a dozen operating within the whole United States. So I have a lot of questions about updates to that modular system, the costs associated versus more traditional systems. And basically, like, how long have those 12 plants been in place? Is there proof of concept already that we can look at? Or do we not yet know what those additional costs will be to upgrade the modular system?
Good question. So we haven't evaluated the cost to upgrade that system. The newest plant in the U S that has, that has put in that technology has only been operating less than two years. And, and actually, there, there's less than a dozen. There's, there's probably only about six that will be running as of this year. So, so it is very new. The, the advantage is that it's, it's simpler to expand, because when you do a typical upgrade at a plant, you would need to add, let's just take the current plant as an example, you would need to add both an oxidation ditch, pumping for that oxidation ditch, and then a clarifier. And this process, I'll, I'll go to the slide here, it operates in a batch sequence in a single tank. So you have your biological activity happening in the same tank as your clarification is happening, so the clean water that's, that's coming off of the process. So because you have two processes occurring in one tank, it's saving you footprint, and it's making it simpler to expand in the future, because instead of adding multiple tanks every time you have to expand, you're just adding a single tank. But again, more, more research and probably some site visits would need to be done before proceeding with this option, just because it's so new.
The base one is the standard, three, three A is, is the standard process. Three B is a little bit more, this one's a virtually experimental.
Yes, yeah. We just, we wanted to look at a, a range of technologies, just to make sure something didn't jump out as being a game changer as far as the cost, but they all ended up being pretty similar in cost.
Mr. Fields?
Travis, could I ask, do you have a sense for how the D and R would respond to a new technology? Or there, are there other technologies that they may be promoting? Are you aware of?
I don't know that they're necessarily promoting any, any single technology. They would definitely need to take a careful review of option 3C, because there are, none of those facilities in Wisconsin right now. The closest one is a pilot facility that's in Rockford. So we'd probably have to get D and R up to speed on, on that option. But I wouldn't say that there's other technologies that they are pushing that we, that we didn't look at. These, these are really the, the standards that are available for new plants, either the oxidation ditch or the conventional activated sludge.
Mr. Fields, do you have a question or follow-up?
Yeah, Travis, thank you for the presentation. You talked about some of the mon, non-monetary items that we got to try and put some value to. Could you also go into what the potential would be for some of the different options to get maybe grant or energy funding, or something we can possibly apply for to offset some of these costs between some of the different options?
Yeah, there's potential for focus on energy grants. We are certainly monitoring the new infrastructure bill, and if there might be opportunities that are coming from that. The guidance on the new infrastructure funding has not been developed yet, so we're hoping to learn more of how that, how that funding is going to be distributed likely in the first part of 2022. But, but we are, we are evaluating those, those options to, to see if there might be grant funding available.
Thanks again for the presentation. I know that this came from the Public Works Board to the council at this point. At this time, we're reviewing option two again, is, is back, back in play, it sounds like. I have concerns about the cost, the, the user fees, how much they're going up based on these, these different options. And I'd like to see some, some further review on the phasing, the grant money, what infrastructure bills may be, there, there's some money available in, in that way, and have further D and R review. So I'd like to see this go back to, back to the board for further review.
Yeah, we kind of figured that, so we'll look at something in January, see when we can get there and, and, because what we're doing now is evaluating it, it's going to take us a while to generate that type of information. So we'll look and try and have something for the Public Works Board in January.
Do we need consensus on that from, from city council to take that back to board? Or we're good with this here?
This was a presentation, an informational presentation for you, and I think, based on what the D and R told us, we should go, we should have gone back to the Public Works Board anyways.
Okay.
So I don't have any, I don't think we need to have anything from the council to take it there. It's going to be in your lap ultimately anyways. So-
All right. Is there any further questions? Why we have Mr. Anderson here? Mrs. Bishop?
I have two questions pending anybody else is chiming in. Okay. My first question is, in the memo, you mentioned regionalization being briefly considered, spent a couple of sentences on it, and then basically dismissed it and said it wasn't going to be discussed further. What did you mean by regionalization when you said it was considered? Just so I know what we're not considering.
Sure, yeah. So we looked at the potential for either bringing in other communities or pumping to, pumping the wastewater for treatment at, at different locations. And because of the distance between Lake Mills and, and any other similar-sized communities, it's really just not feasible or cost-effective to construct a, a regional plant. The, the cost would end up exceeding the costs that are in this report because of the, because of how expensive it is to construct forest mains that long. You're talking- You're talking forest mains that are over 10 miles long, and then you'd end up having to construct a brand-new facility anyway. So what we were talking about there is basically joining with other communities to, to construct a treatment plant that would not just serve Lake Mills, but would serve two or more communities. And without, without a, a community that's, that's right next door, it, it just oftentimes doesn't make economic sense because of the forest main cost and then the significant upgrades with, with a plant expansion, like we, you know, like we already have done the analysis for in this, in this presentation.
Okay, so I'm hearing you say something like a regional wastewater authority, and that combined power would be not cost-effective compared to the options presented. Okay. And then my final question was, one of your bullet points said the DNR requires the lowest cost option. And so what I thought I was hearing you say, if I play that out, is, let's say for some reason, this council likes a medium to higher cost option for the benefits for our community. Does what you said in your slide mean that the DNR would not allow that because they require the lower cost? Or how does that play out?
So they do require that you evaluate the environmental impacts as well, in addition to the cost-effectiveness evaluation. And in our discussions with them, what we determined is, they, they understand that there are risks and non-monetary drawbacks to staying at the existing site. And in order for them to approve the facility plan for option three, you would have to do calculations to monetize some of those non-monetary factors. So we would, we would need to put a dollar value to the risk of having a more strict effluent limit in the future. So basically, we would need to convert risk to dollars, and that would increase the costs of options one and two, so that they would be closer to options three. Because the, those are, those are real factors that need to be considered. It's just, it's, it's difficult to put a precise dollar amount on those risks, but you would need to do some evaluation to incorporate monetizing those non-monetary factors. So a, a similar situation would be, what, you know, what's the dollar value of not having a new oxidation ditch 50 feet from your house? It, it's, it's hard to put a, a dollar value on that, but we would need to go through that exercise so that you're comparing apples to apples on a monetary basis. That's, that's what DNR is looking for, if, if you were to go down the route of wanting to proceed with option three.
They also don't say you have to take the lowest-cost one. They will look at something that's within the 10% to 20% range.
Yep.
So if you picked option two, which is more expensive than option one, they would, they would probably be pretty close to allowing that to go. If, if you, but they looked at it and they said, well, we, we see there are a lot of advantages that, to option three. Can you figure out how to quantify those advantages? And they said, if, if you do that and we accept that, you might get to the point where we would say, yeah, option three is a, is close enough, then we'll, we'll take it.
I guess if we're meeting or exceeding the environmental standards, I don't know why the DNR cares how much money we spend. I think that should be a local community issue. But if that's the rule, that's the rule. I just wanted to clarify my understanding, so thank you.
Yeah, I don't think you understand the state at all.
Ah, there's a lot to that.
They, they always want to tell us what we're going to spend.
Great question. Thank you.
So when we send this back to the board, I want to make sure that we're focusing on that option two phasing options and, and drill down on that, so that we understand those costs at the different phases. Does that make sense? Awesome.
We, we have to do that for the DNR anyways. That was part of the, the analysis between one, two, and three.
All right. Any other questions here? All right. Thank you for your time, Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, thank you all. Very nice to meet you.
Great. All right, moving forward to item C. Discussion Decision on Acceptance of Donation from Lake Mills Community Foundation Automated License Plate Reader, ALR. Megan, can you read the motion? Megan, we can't hear you quite yet. We're looking for motion...
Hear me now?
Yep, gotcha. 21-12-1-2.
Accepting the donation from the Lake Mills Community Foundation of Automatic, Automated License Plate Readers for use by the Lake Mills Police Department.
Great. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve motion 21-12-1-2.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Curler, second by Ms. Quidnow. Staff discussion. I see, see the chief is up at the mic. Why don't we go right to you?
Oh, good evening.
Turn the mic on.
How we doing? Here we go. So, good evening, everyone. Basically, I've applied some documents to everyone. They should have received those by now. And for those at home, it's, we do have one automated license plate reader right now mounted on one of our squad cars. It was approved in 2018. We put it into play in 2019 through a donation at that time as well. And that same person has stepped forward and offered one. And when we contacted the company for a quote, they said they're having a two-for-one sale at the end of the year here. So we took that dollar amount back to the donor, and he's agreed to move forward with that. So basically, the license plate system that's been mounted on the car now for two years has led us to find a couple of stolen vehicles. License plate issues are almost a daily occurrence, and then those traffic stops lead to drunk driving arrests, warrant arrests, drug arrests. So it's increasing our productivity out on the street, and it, you know, basically, it's, it's paying for itself by helping the officers be, I guess, more expedient. As they drive around, they're not supposed to be accessing their computer to run license plates, because it's not safe for them or the other public, and the, the machine does it for them. And whereas an officer might catch a license plate going by, that they might not be able to, they may not be able to see that in dark, and as we see right now with the sun setting at 4:30, we've got a lot of hours of darkness. The license plate reader actually is infrared, and it'll pick up those license plates in the dark. But it also does it in a 360-degree. So the officer only has the ability maybe to pick out a car here, a car there, whatever, and this is just expedites what we're already doing as a, as a law enforcement agency. So because it's only on one car, trying to utilize that car more often means that that car is getting a, a lot more miles on it than the other cars are if we're switching guys in and out of that. We've tried to be a little bit COVID-sensitive and not stack all our people into the same car, so it's not getting used as much. But, you know, there is, there's times when we have, you know, two officers on duty. It'd be nice to be able to utilize that. And then our K-9 squad, you know, obviously, they have had a, a great amount of success, and this will just add to their ability to do the job. So this is a technology that is sweeping the country at this time, sweeping across Wisconsin, and it's, it's been a boon to our agency and our ability to be more efficient, so.
All right. Is there any questions for the chief or staff?
Can I just make a quick comment?
Sure.
I just want to extend a huge thank you to the anonymous donor who was willing to put forth the finances for this, and I can see how it would benefit the community in the long run. So I just, if they're here or if they're listening, I appreciate, we appreciate their investment.
Yeah, and I, I definitely hear that, and I'm hoping that this person will allow me the opportunity to thank him in person. But until then, yes, this broad citywide thank you on, on TVs, all we can do right now.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Anything else from the staff? Seeing none, can we go to a roll call vote? Megan?
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passed five to zero.
All right. Fantastic.
All right, thank you, guys.
Congratulations.
All right.
Congratulations to the city of Lake Mills, where we'll be safer because of this. This is great. Thank you.
Have a Merry Christmas if I don't see you.
Thanks. Did you see Paul had Christmas lights on when he was, when he was on earlier?
He's always schmoozing.
All right. Thank you. Moving to item D. Discussion Decision on Awarding 2022 Grave Open Closing, Closed Contract. Metner, did I pronounce that right? Metner's Land Service LLC.
Meitner.
Meitner, thank you. Thank you. Megan, can you read the motion?
Motion 21-12-1-3, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the city of Lake Mills and Meitner's Land Service.
All right. Can we have a motion?
I move to adopt motion 21-12-1-3, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the city of Lake Mills and Meitner's Land Service.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Quidnow, second by Ms. Bishop. Mrs. Bishop, let's see. Staff comment?
Every December, we see this. The contracted service we use generally gives us an updated list of what they're going to charge us for those costs. But we did go out a couple occasions and take other bids, but this is a pretty unique service. Not a lot of people out there volunteering to do this, and there are some specialized pieces of equipment that go along with it, such as, you know, heaters that warm up, thaw the ground out and those types of things. So we recommend approval. Yeah, you put down a blanket, you slide a heater under it, it thaws the ground out, and then you can dig in the winter time.
I see that you attached several years of, of cost associated, the costing that we've seen over the years, so that's been included in the packet as well, so. Any other questions or comment? Seeing none, let's move to a roll call vote.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passed five to zero.
All right. Thank you. Item E. Discussion Decision Authorizing City Manager to Advertise an Executive Search Request for Proposals. Steve, do you want to take this one?
Oh, there is no motion. Oh, there is a motion.
I'll, I'll help you out. I move to adopt motion 21-12-1-4, authorizing the city manager to advertise an executive search request for proposals.
I'll second.
So Megan, can we read the motion, and then we'll announce the, the motions? Can you read the motion?
Motion 21-12-1-4, authorizing the city manager to advertise and execute, executive search request for proposals. Sorry.
All right. I think we're all getting choked up on this one, but the motion was by...
I'm hoping that you're not going to execute me.
The motion was by Ms. Quidnow.
I'm sorry, Steve. I promise I won't. I just don't want you to leave.
Take him out of the passenger.
So the motion was by Ms. Quidnow, and the second by Mr. Fields. So this is an executive search for a new city manager. Mr. Wilkie, do you have a comment on this?
It should be, you know, we should get it out early and get them in here in February so that you can start talking to them and narrow out, you know, what you want to do. There's a lot of information that you have to provide them that helps them build the profile and do the search. And so I'm imagining that they'll be working with you probably, if you finalize the contract sometime in March or April, that, that they'll be working with you right up until July, and then you can do your advertisements and get the people in here, interview them, and have them ready to go sometime in September.
All right. And just to make it official, you're retiring, and, and that'll be in the fall of this year, actually.
My last official day of work should be September 8th. My actual retirement date will be March 17th of '23. So hopefully, you'll have someone in that I'll be able to work with for a little while, and then go on vacation and not have to worry about it.
All right. I'm, I'm sure we'll have plenty of time to, to work with you and, and wish you the best moving forward, but this is to, to start that search. Is there any questions or comments on this motion?
It's a long ways out. I like Betsy.
Ms. Curler, question?
I, I just had two comments. One, thank you, Steve. It seems like it's, goes into a good level of detail of all of the steps that we're going to need help with, and I really am glad that we're going to bring someone in with that expertise to, to, you know, work with us, work with all the staff to get prepared. The other comment I wanted to make is just to my fellow council members, we talked about the idea of maybe updating the city manager performance review procedures, now that we've, you know, as a team, we've all been through that once, and it seems like we could do that sort of parallel with the work that the, you know, whoever our consultant is for this, because we'll be thinking about, you know, what are the qualities and, and duties that we're looking for in a city manager. So I just wanted to put that out there to remind us that that might be something that we might want to update that policy mid-year, you know, next year, kind of in parallel with this search.
Great idea. Any other comments or questions? All right. Seeing none, can we have a roll call on motion 21-12-1-4?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Motion passed five to zero.
All right. Thank you. Moving to item F. Resolution 21-66, Establishing Fees for Operation of Use of Rock Lake Cemetery. Megan, can you read resolution 21-66?
Resolution, Establishing Fees for Operation and Use of Rock Lake Cemetery, Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
All right. Can I have a motion for the resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 21-66, Establishing the 2022 Fees for Operation and Use of the Rock Lake Cemetery.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Curler, second by Mrs. Bishop. Is there any discussion on this from city staff?
The fees are generally updated to incorporate the Meitner contract and then any other issues that we see out there, so you'll note that not all of them were raised, just some of them. The endowment fee was probably the most significant one, which, there was an agreement about 15 years ago on how to do it, and about 18 years ago, it got dropped. And so we tried to pick it back up a little bit again here and, and bring the endowment fees back up to, well, they're not even going to be close, are they, they're going to be? But a little bit of an increase, because the endowment fees are what maintains a cemetery in the long run once you're, because it's, try not to have it as, be a full city expense. You hope that the endowment raises some, some money to be able to pay for the maintenance of the sites.
All right. Any questions or comments? All right, any questions or comments? Seeing none, let's move to a roll call on resolution 21-66.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion or resolution passed five to zero.
All right, thank you. Item G is resolution 21-67. Establishing Garbage Refuge and Recycling Pickup and Disposal Fees. Megan, can you read resolution 21-67?
Establishing Garbage Refuge and Recycle Pickup and Disposal Fees pursuant to Section 556-20 of the City of Lake Mills Municipal Code.
All right, can we have a motion for the resolution?
I move to approve resolution 21-67. Establishing Garbage Refuge and Recycling Pickup and Disposal Fees pursuant to Lake Mills Municipal Code.
I second.
Motion by Mrs. Bishop, second by Ms. Quidnow. Is there discussion from city staff?
Betsy?
So based on the increase in fees from John's Recycling, we take a look at what our revenues will potentially be based on the current fees we're putting in our, the utility bills. So you're paying for the garbage and recycling within that utility bill, and it's a separate line, so you can see that. So we look at those revenues, plus the revenue we receive from the state as a garbage and recycling grant. And that's generally around the same amount. So I'm estimating a lot of these costs and trying to make sure that, you know, we're not gonna make money on it. We're just gonna try to collect just enough to pay for what John's is charging us. So that's where I come up with this, the new rate, based on what I think those estimates will be. I know we've been a little behind in past years. We haven't gone over, but as close as I can get it.
Is there any questions or comment? Seeing none, can we move to a roll call vote on resolution 21-67?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passed five to zero.
Thank you. Item H on the agenda, resolution 21-68. Conditional Use Request for Applicant Tim, I'm gonna kill this name. Tretik, Tri-Tech, Tri-Tech, on behalf of owner Neil Ruff, for motor vehicle service and repair. Megan, can you read the resolution?
Conditional Use Permit, Declarations and Findings, Lakeland CB Real Estate LLC by Neil Ruffing, DBA Badger Chevrolet Buick. 321 East Tyranina Park Road, Parcels 246-0713-1213-002.
Thank you, Megan. Can I have a, can we have a motion for resolution 21-68?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 21-68. Approving the Conditional Use Permit for Badger Chevrolet Buick.
I'll second.
So motion by Ms. Curler, second by Mr. Fields. Comment from staff?
They've submitted a conditional use permit for Badger Chevrolet or Badger Truck. The staff has reviewed it, took it to plan commission when they hit their requirements. Plan commission recommended approval. There were some conditions that they had on it that we required them to fulfill. They fulfilled those. An item or two that are still outstanding, that's not a big deal. So we recommend approval of this conditional use permit. I think he wants to dig tomorrow. He might need a heater to thaw the ground out.
Just call the cemetery company.
I move to suspend the rules to allow for the folks who are here to talk about that.
Second.
All right, motion to suspend the rules by Ms. Quidnow and a second by Ms. Curler. All those in favor, raise your hands. Aye. All in favor is 5-0. All right, the floor is open. Would you guys like to address the city council?
Green Button. Right. Yeah, my name is Jim Tretik. I'm the architect, builder, resolvend, design, build. And thanks for having us tonight. I'm here with John Schlegenhoff, who's the owner. We've met all the conditions at plan commission. There is one item pending the making of a single lot CSM. We did have a concern we brought up at plan commission, and that was the landscaping required, especially along both roads. We were hoping to get a little leniency on that. I don't know, John, if you wanted to speak to that at all. But, you know, with their landscaping is usually to hide cars in parking lots, but their cars are their display, their product. And now we're hiding them from the interstate. We have met that requirement that we submitted as requested by Brian from Meeden Hunt. But would like, I guess, another thought on that.
So are you wanting to have that up on the screen? I'm not sure if I can do that, but I know it's in our notes. Can we get that up on the screen by chance? All right, thank you.
I'm Neil Ruffing with Badger Truck and Auto Group. So. One of the things we talk and we discuss and to understand being an automotive dealership, et cetera, we like to display our vehicles so people can see them. And in part of the plan, what they have out on the plan, basically we're talking about is where the grouping of trees are along 94. For example, so that would hide the display of vehicles that we have, as some would out on the entrance road also. So we would like, if possible, cut back on the display of those trees. So we can, people can see what we do have out there. It's not like we have a parking lot. I know it looks like a parking lot, I just don't want to say that. But we do, in fact, have new vehicles, commercial vehicles, et cetera, that we would like to display. So that's a request that we have, or that's a thought that we have.
So where are we at from a city review on that?
And I don't know if it was discussed at plan commission. I wasn't there.
No, so I'm on the plan commission where I first met you gentlemen. And I had thought the issue at plan commission was the shrubbery or greenery in the parking lot itself. Not as a screen between your parking lot and the highway. Was that not the issue? And did this come up after? Or can you give more, shed more light on that?
Yeah, we, there was a couple issues of landscaping that our initial supplemental didn't include that was pointed out, like foundation landscaping. We added that. And there was two tree islands, well, I'll call them tree islands, with shrubs that we put in the parking lot. But it was more the trees and John's brother Paul spoke about that, that the trees along the interstate, as we just pointed out. That we thought were, you know, an issue that blocking the vehicles now. Like I said, the plans we have submitted right now still show the plan as requested. And we'd still like to get started on the project, but we'd just like a little more consideration. You know, we've got some time on this. The landscaping won't be done till spring anyway, but we'd still like to start the project. But if there's any other way we could have a little consideration on those trees, as we just pointed out, would be appreciated.
So could you provide an example from the resolution we have in front of us of what you would want changed to accomplish that goal?
Well. As few trees as possible along the interstate and the road that we have to, the darker ones here are ones we have to add. We have some low shrubs in between them, but it's the trees, the leaves, the birds, you know, and just blocking the view of the inventory.
Mr. President, I wonder if it is something, you know, in condition A in the resolution talks about meeting the requirements in the planner's memo. And I'm wondering if this is one of the items in the planner's memo that we could call out.
That's where I was looking too, Ms. Curler. I'm not sure if the applicant wants us to write in an exception. I mean, there probably should be some greenery without going back to the planner's memo. If we can take a few minutes to do that here, that and the, looking at the ordinance specifically, I'm not sure what accomplishes both the city's goals and the applicant's goals right at this moment. So I'll take a minute and keep looking at that. I had an additional question in the meantime, if I may, Greg or Steve, okay. At the, at the plan commission meeting, we also discussed, I guess it's the service bay area that's gonna be extended. It's gonna have a long horizontal wall. That's basically gonna be parallel to the highway. And the plan commission concern was in regard to the ordinance that we didn't want it to look industrial. Okay, yeah, I'd like to see the update, please.
Yes, we updated that. Those, those in blue, there's three of them on the new addition. We had nothing before. And we added, we copied the blue stripe. And those three in blue are the exact same size as the blue entrances that you see now. We just mimic that, as they said, mimic the existing. And we added some windows there and continued the block pattern of the ribbed and, and, you know. And I submitted this on the first. So I think everybody has seen that. Brian has seen it. So that's what we're doing there. And this block is coming in and out to give it a little depth. Otherwise it was, yeah, it's on the other side here. Otherwise it was this long straight wall, this long straight wall, which was not very attractive. So we've improved that.
Yeah, Brian, Brian felt that was good.
Okay, thank you for showing us. I think that's in line with what we discussed.
So on this other issue, is Meeden Hunt online by chance? Is Meeden Hunt online?
No, they're not tonight.
Okay.
So in the planner's memo, he discusses landscape requirements specifically with regard to the perimeter. It appears that the ordinance requires 40% of the perimeter to be planted with shrubs that are at least four feet tall. I mean, I'm paraphrasing there based on the memo that I'm reading right now. But to me, it sounds like you have some discretion there with regard to the actual placement of shrubs. And potentially if just 40% of the perimeter is required to be landscaped with such shrubs. Maybe it doesn't have to be necessarily shown in that depiction.
Yeah, yeah. And all we're asking for is if we can revisit that issue.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, because like I said, we got time. We can't plant, we can come back with just that issue and still get our permit this week.
Yeah.
The highway is also elevated from that piece of ground, so I think you would still meet your goals. That's how I see it at this point.
Yeah, Mr. President, I'm seeing the same thing that our attorney is on page three of the planner's memo. There's discussion of the interior parkway where the planner indicates some additional trees should be planted. But the rear yard perimeter says that that requirement is met. So that would have been before your additional trees along the interstate there. So it sounded like there were, as I'm reading the planner's memo, that there was not additional trees required at the back along the interstate. I didn't watch the plan commission, so I hope that matches the conversation.
In addition, Ms. Curler, this section also says, provides similar depth as the existing development pattern, parking lot layout, which was previously granted conditional use. So does the previous conditional use grant go away with this CUP or?
Yes.
Okay. So how does that work then to maintain their current landscaping requirements that were granted with the previous CUP?
The current one refers to the previous one, so. But you also look at the new conditions, so what the code then might, was probably different than what it is now. So what he'll do is we'll evaluate to make sure that, that we're meeting the existing code, or at least close. And we'll see how it works. The part that was, already had enough trees on it was to the west. So they didn't need to do anything over there though. But how they put the shrubs on there, we can talk about that. That's not as stringent as it looks.
Okay. So are you okay with working with the city staff on that issue?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Sure. And we're still looking at starting next week?
If they pass this tonight, you can start tomorrow.
Really? Okay. It's gonna be warm. It's gonna be in the 50s next week, so that'll be ideal for you. Yeah, exactly. That's what we, that's what we're hoping for.
Do you have any further comment before I go to the council for questions?
No, unless you have any questions, it's me. I appreciate it.
Any question, any further questions from the council? Ms. Curler?
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to comment, I want to thank you for the detailed plans. I think they're very easy to follow. And they provide the level of detail that our zoning administrator and our planner need to do these kind of reviews, so thank you.
Sure, I appreciate that. You're welcome.
This is more of a question for city staff with regard to the trees that need to be planted. Do they need to be a specific kind of tree?
There's a number of different types and breeds of trees.
Yes.
Species.
Species. The code, the city does have code that tells you, you know, what's allowed and what's not. We try and stay within, what do they call it? There's a. Generally, there are trees that grow in certain regions, and they have those set up by zones.
Yeah.
And then you, we have our trees picked on that, and then we have some trees, like, I don't think you can plant the weeping willow in the City of Lake Mills. That's just something you can't do. But the vast majority of trees are allowed.
Okay, I was just thinking about what kinds of trees would want to be around a car lot so that they don't have a lot of, a lot of things to have to deal with on the windows of the cars when they--
Yeah, exactly. The landscape architect we use, Sullivan does a lot of car dealerships. And we ask him to specify a tree that doesn't allow, doesn't have a lot of sap or any, can't do much about the birds, because they'll pick any tree. But yeah, that's, we've changed some trees.
I'm gonna tell you, the trees will be the least of their problems. That stormwater, that stormwater detention basin will draw the geese.
Oh, yeah.
And, and then the geese will be, every time there's a car pulling in, they'll.
That'll be true.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, can we move to a roll call on resolution 21-68?
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passed five to zero.
All right, thank you. Congratulations and good luck on the new addition. Looking forward to seeing it and. Fantastic.
Good luck.
Good luck. How exciting. How exciting. Yeah, they always do them on cold days. All right, thank you. Seeing nobody wanting to maybe take a break, I'm going to suggest that we take a five-minute break. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Awesome. All those in favor, raise your hand. All right, it carries, five-minute break. Thank you. All right, it's wonderful to get that break in. Now we can power through this and finish up the meeting. So we're on item I, which is Resolution 21-69, City Manager Compensation. Megan, can you read that resolution?
Resolution 21-69, City Manager Compensation.
All right, can we get a motion?
Point of order real quick, did we need to reconvene at all? Or a motion to reconvene? I'm just confused on that.
I actually missed the formal action that was taken. There was a motion to have a five-minute break. That was seconded, and there's a formal motion to reconvene and go through the process.
All right, thank you.
Sorry.
That's all right. So can we have a motion to reconvene?
Aye, so move.
Is that Ms. Bishop?
A second.
So motion to reconvene by Mrs. Bishop, second by Ms. Curler. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries five oh. All right, so we are reconvened. We're on item I, which is Resolution 21-69, which is City Manager Compensation. Megan read that, which was, I think, identical to what I just said, so we're going to carry forward. Is there a motion for the Resolution 21-69?
I move to approve Resolution 21-69, City Manager Compensation.
Aye, second.
Motion by Ms. Bishop, second by Ms. Quidnow. Is there a discussion? Probably Dan would be appropriate for this one.
Sure thing, thank you. This is kind of the culmination of your annual city manager review process. You completed that this year. The increase that has been budgeted is a 2% increase, and that is consistent with all of the other treatment for employees in the city of Lake Mills.
2% plus that.
Yeah, 2% increase, and then the other, the final paragraph of the motion is a 0.5% bonus, assuming that the holiday for income continuation continues. And what that is, is a form of insurance that premiums are not currently collected because the state system is overflowing with cash with regard to that specific application. So assuming that that holiday continues, a 0.5% bonus will be granted to the city manager at the end of the year in 2022 as well, in accordance with this motion or this resolution, excuse me. This is a requirement. This is really the only employee of the city of Lake Mills that this specific step is taken forward. You guys have complete control as the council over the city manager's compensation. Other than that, it's basically already been budgeted in the 2022 budget that you have passed, and if you have any questions, I'd certainly be happy to answer.
Is there any questions or comment? All right, seeing none, let's move to a roll call vote for Resolution 21-69.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passed five to zero.
Thank you. All right, item J, Resolution 21-70, authorizing acceptance of public improvement and reduction of financial guarantee for Drummond Crossing. Megan, can you read Resolution 21-70?
Acceptance of public improvements and reduction of financial guarantee, Drummond Crossing condominium development.
All right, can we have a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 21-28, reduction of financial guarantee.
It's 21-70.
Sorry, 21-70.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
So motion by Mr. Fields, second by Ms. Curler. Staff comment?
I move to suspend the rules to allow for the individuals who is here for this particular resolution to speak.
A second.
So motion to suspend the rules by Ms. Quidnow, second by Mr. Fields. All those in favor, raise your hand. Aye. That's five oh.
He doesn't want to.
That's fine. I thought I'd give you the floor if you wanted it.
All right, so he objects to the floor, but that's fine. Thank you for coming tonight. Okay, fantastic. Staff comment on this?
I'll start. That's Mr. Doug Mullay in the audience, just so you all know. He is a principal that is involved with Formal LLC that is developing 1204 South Main Street. They have requested their second reduction of the letter of credit that is the surety in this development. They have also petitioned and requested acceptance of public improvements that have been dedicated to the city of Lake Mills. Adequate review by the contract engineer has been accomplished, and they have recommended that we should accept the improvements as substantially completed. In that circumstance, under our local ordinance, assuming that we are at the point of substantial completion and over 90% of the, over 75% of the development has been completed and less than 100% has, we are required to maintain a minimum of 15% of the surety amount for the remaining warranty period, which is one year. So that's what the resolution dictates at this point. We're going to maintain 15% of the original total cost estimate of the improvements, and infrastructure will be accepted by the city, the dedication of the infrastructure will be accepted, and the one-year warranty period will be initiated from this date moving forward.
And the resolution that originally Mr. Fields was talking about, 21-28, was a prior...
That was the first reduction of the surety for this development, yes.
Back in May, so this is a follow-up action to that.
They're moving along pretty quickly. I think this is actually appropriate to note, that May reduction was, you know, pretty early in the game. They do have one building up at this point, another one planned that they have a permit for, and they're moving forward on relatively quickly. This is a 2021 project that is moving along quickly, so I think that serves the community, and it's overall a great thing, so.
All right, so any questions or comments on this? Seeing none, everybody wants to get home, I guess. Can we have a roll call on Resolution 21-70?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Motion passed five to zero.
All right, thank you, congratulations. Keep moving, keep doing your doing. All right, fantastic. All right, moving forward, item K on the agenda is Resolution 21-71, authorizing acceptance of public improvement at Tyrena Point. Megan, can you read Resolution 21-71?
Acceptance of public improvements, Tyrena Point subdivision.
Fantastic. Can we have a motion to this Resolution 21-71?
I move to adopt Resolution 21-71, acceptance of public improvements to Tyrena Point subdivision. Second.
Double seconds. I think I'm going to give it to... The motion was Ms. Quidnow, and the second was Ms. Curler. Is there any discussion from the city on this? City staff? Looks like Dan's getting this again, huh?
I am.
Did such a good job last time.
Yeah, I'm trying to engage in brevity here, but I get a little long-winded once in a while. So this is really a similar situation, development Tyrena Point on Mud Lake Road. This is the, basically the third action that the council has taken with regard to their surety. We do have a little bit of an issue that has come up with an argument regarding substantial completion. So I'm going to request that the resolution is actually amended a little bit. The, where we're at is, the public improvements have been accepted, and arguably, they were accepted at the end of May 2021, when the binder course went down for the roadway that was dedicated and accepted at that point. Under statute, the developer has a pretty strong argument that the one-year warranty period actually started at that point in time, when substantial completion occurred under statute. Our letter from the engineer, as well as the resolution, contemplates the one-year warranty period starting basically on this date. So I would like the council to consider changing that to the one-year warranty period actually starting at the end of May 2021 and running through May 2022. We have discussed that internally. I think the biggest goal with regard to roadway specifically is having at least one freeze off thaw cycle where the improvements can be observed, and to make sure that if there are any legitimate warranty claims, we can make them timely. Under the current schedule, adjusting it from May 2021 to May 2022, staff is confident that we can examine that early enough in spring and get out warranty claims prior to the end of that period of time. And the developer in this circumstance is comfortable with us holding on to the remaining surety in escrow account until those warranty claims are resolved. So what I would suggest is actually amending the final paragraph and be it further resolved in the final sentence of that for the one-year warranty period. Perhaps you can just add, for the one-year warranty period starting May 31, 2021, right? May 31, 2021, until May 31, 2022, rather than initiating on December 7.
Dan, do we need to, up above it talks about...
The initiation as well, yes.
Do we need to amend that as well? It's currently stating August 15.
It wasn't date-specific, so I wasn't as worried about that, but if you want to, yes, it should mirror that. My goal was to explicitly state, the warranty period is from this point to this point at some place in the resolution. I think that is enough. If you want to make both amendments, yes. If not, I'm comfortable with it in the final paragraph. That's the bank's direction, and that's kind of the most important in this circumstance. We've discussed it internally, and the, it's definitely a schedule that we can work with, and we're confident in the, it's passed inspection already, we're confident in the quality and the responsiveness of the developer in the event that we do have warranty claims. And then that comfort is kind of bolstered by the fact that we're still maintaining, once again, approximately 15% of the total cost of the estimated cost of the development in escrow, so.
So by pushing that to May 31, 2021, it gives us a longer period as a city, or how, what's the reason for that?
It reduces it compared to the, what the way the resolution is currently worded. We have a one-year warranty period. What we're saying is that one-year warranty period is actually already started as of May 31, 2021. It will go through May 31, 2022, as opposed to December to December. And it's a statutory argument based on Wisconsin Statute 236.1321 AM 2, which specifically states, and this was incorporated into our development agreement, it specifically states that substantial completion is determined by asphaltic binder when roads are being dedicated in a subdivision. That occurred, I believe under statute, he has a very strong argument that that does dictate substantial completion, and that does initiate our warranty period.
Mrs. Bishop?
So if we don't make that change, are we, as the city's saying that the warranty period starts as of the date this resolution is adopted?
Yes.
Okay, so that's where you get the December to December, and then we're basically getting almost a year and a half as opposed to the year.
Staff didn't contemplate the warranty period having already started. We've been out on site, we've reviewed, everything has been up to snuff, been built in accordance with the plans and been built in a workmanlike manner. We're confident in the improvements, we've accepted dedication of them as of the end of May in the previous resolution. We just held off because we hadn't accepted everything. So that's where the argument is. Staff did not contemplate that the warranty period had already been initiated. However, we're receptive to the idea that it has been. We don't have any warranty claims at this point. We're confident going through one freeze off thaw cycle, which is the general goal. That we'll be able to catch any warranty claims early enough next spring, give them notice and have them perform and complete those while we still have surety, and proceed in that manner, as opposed to kind of delaying that one-year warranty period initiation.
I just had a question, Attorney Drescher, just as a point of clarification, in the resolution, it refers to the past actions of the council, and the first time that we reduced the financial, the Phase Two financial guarantee was, it says on or about May 18, 2021, and I think it was May 18 was the council meeting. So is that the date?
So...
It was when the council took action, or it was when some street work, some level of street work was completed?
We're going off of bills, billing cycles here. I don't specifically recall, and we'd have to go through engineering notes to find out when the asphaltic binder was actually laid. The contractor, the developer, has basically said, just go with the end of May, I'm fine with that date.
So it's sort of a way of reaching a compromise, and the city is giving a little to acknowledge that that work was completed. Okay, thank you.
I'm just wondering if we always add in the dates for the one-year time period in these reductions?
I actually typically don't. I run off of the engineer's statement that this is substantially completed. I think we ran into a little confusion on this one, and honestly, a similar situation with Formal. We're running multiple reductions of these sureties on a project in a relative short time. So I think that we've dealt with different contract engineers on it from strand, and I guess I kind of believe, and I'm not throwing anyone under the bus here whatsoever, but I think that perhaps this was an oversight, and we realized that we still had surety, they still certainly had stuff to complete. We did definitely make certain acceptances of dedications in the previous motion, that is, or the previous resolution, that is without a doubt. Whether or not that constituted substantial completion at that point probably wasn't really contemplated. So at this point, as we look back to that, he made the claim under, or under statute, that substantial completion had to be acknowledged at that point based on that asphaltic binder, and I think he has a strong argument in statute.
So what's the legal ramification of the council putting in this timeframe into our resolution beyond just memorializing the city's understanding with?
The reason I wanted in this resolution specifically is because the engineer's letter recommending acceptance and any reduction, there is no reduction in this one because we've already done that to this point, but the engineer's letter specifically does state December 7 as the initiation of the one-year warranty period. I want the resolution to outweigh that document. We're relying on that document. At the same time, this is the one that has, you know, the weight and the authority.
One thing that should be brought up is historically, the developer was responsible for giving us notice that they're substantially complete and that they want... for giving us notice that they're substantially complete and that they want their reduction done. Their engineer is supposed to submit a letter to us saying that and they, we haven't been getting that. To top it off, the legislature historically didn't have anything on the requirement. So, you know, we kind of got caught in both ways. They didn't file with us, so we really didn't have any push to file that. And then, on top of it, when we did get it in there, now they're claiming that, well, we really were done in May, but we're here looking at it. And historically, we would have said, state didn't have anything to do with it. We get to set it from the date that we finalized it and that would have been today. But, you know, things change.
So, am I willing to sponsor this amendment?
I will. I move to amend Resolution 21-71 on the second page. It was that last sentence, right, Mr. Drescher?
Yes, sir.
Okay. To add, on the last line of the second page, after the end of, for the one-year warranty period, to add, starting May 31st, 2021, comma, until, I'm adding commas, I guess you guys can get the punctuation correct, until May 31st, 2022, end period. Megan, if you need me to repeat that, I can. I apologize.
I'll second that amendment.
So, motion by Mrs. Bishop and a second by Ms. Curler to amend the last line for the one-year warranty period, starting May 31st, 2021, comma, until May 31st, 2022.
Does the comma go there? I don't know.
All those in favor, raise your hand as an aye. That's 5-0, so that amendment passes. I think we still have to vote on the, on the motion, or the resolution, actually, but there's an amendment that's been made. Is there any further discussion? See no further discussion? Let's do a roll call on Resolution 21-71 with the amendment that was just approved.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed five to zero.
All right, fantastic. Thank you. Item L on the agenda, Resolution 21-72, authorizing city manager to direct the treasurer to transfer funds to capital budget. Megan, can you read the Resolution 21-72?
Authorizing the city manager to direct the treasurer to transfer funds, capital budget.
Thank you. Can we have a motion?
I have motion to adopt Resolution 21-72, authorizing the city manager to direct the treasurer to transfer funds to the capital budget.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion by Ms. Quidnow, second by Mr. Fields. Betsy, would you like to comment on this? Or would Mr. Wilkie like to comment?
I can do it.
All right.
So, there are several items in the capital budget that weren't complete.
Can you speak up a little?
I want to move my microphone. There were, there were a few items in the capital budget that weren't complete and the department heads and, you know, the budget itself is asking for reserving these funds to finish the projects and pay for them in subsequent years. So, typically, it'll just be the next year that the project will be complete. You have a couple memos in there from department heads explaining what's going on and requesting that the money is reserved to be used in the future, such as the fire department pager radio upgrades. You know, they want to make sure that everything is implemented in place, working properly before they pay for it, and they were told that it would not occur this year any longer. There's the municipal building. There's some items that he still wants to complete that materials aren't available for him to perform that work. It's ordered, but it's not here yet. The library is in the same situation. When we're looking at sidewalk, there's funds left over that we would like to use in the future to complete sidewalk. You know, we budgeted, we borrowed for it. We want to continue to use those funds the way they were intended. We've got, oh, the fire department, personal protective equipment. He explained that he had wanted that money as a matching. That grant was denied, so we still have to purchase it. So, he wants to reserve those funds in order to do that this, this coming year. So, this resolution is just requesting permission to be able to use those funds in the next year, but we're not changing any of the uses of it. We're just moving it forward and paying for it out of funds in the next year.
So, these are all items that were budgeted for in 2021 and we're just shifting it to 2022?
Correct. That's correct.
All right, is there any questions or comments?
Just a quick question then. This would be what I think you call the reserve fund balance. Whenever you talk about that, those are those monies that, they don't go into the 2022 budget. They're reserved from this year to spend later.
Right, right. You're going to see the purchases in the capital budget report that you receive. It, that's why sometimes you're going to see some negative numbers in there because there's a zero budgeted amount for that particular year. It's just being expended in that year and it just goes back to these reserves.
Okay, thanks.
Is there any further follow-up questions? Ms. Bishop?
Yes, pertaining to the library. In the memo, we have, not the memo, the resolution, we have, we say that the library is going to be painted, but in the memo Mr. Saylor submitted, he talks about electrical repairs, storm windows, and a third item that I am blanking on. If we're being so specific in the resolution, should we update it to include those items instead or is there any reason not to do so?
We could amend it if you'd like. I'm thinking that we can leave it as it is because he is doing capital improvements under a capital budget and that's what the money was borrowed for, were capital improvements to the library and that hasn't changed.
Okay, I just didn't want to restrict him in a resolution if the money was for other items as well.
Right, right. And the use of the term painting was just where it came from in our budget line.
Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none. Let's move to a roll call for Resolution 21-72.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passed five to zero.
Thank you. Item M on the agenda is Resolution 21-73, authorizing city manager to direct the treasurer to transfer funds, fire, and legal departments. Megan, can you read Resolution 21-73?
Authorizing the city manager to direct the treasurer to transfer funds, fire, and legal departments.
Thank you. Sometimes they sound exactly the same, but other times not. So, I guess it's worth going through the exercise. But anyway, can we have a motion for Resolution 21-73?
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution 21-73, authorizing the city manager to direct the treasurer to transfer funds, fire, and legal departments.
Aye, second.
So, motion by Ms. Curler, second by Ms. Quidnow. Is there, it's probably back to Betsy. Is there comment from staff?
Sure, sure. These are in the operations budget, not in the capital, and because they involve payroll, that's why this is taken to the, to the city council for authorization because the amount budgeted for payroll would be changed. For the fire department, the funds want to be moved from the pensions line into the payroll and social security line in order to present some of the firefighters, probably all of them, a payment based on the service that they've provided in lieu of the length of service award program that we had done in years previous. The, this, we had decided to discontinue that program because it was not financially, it just wasn't working out financially. It was not providing the benefit. It wasn't encouraging longevity in the fire department, which is what his intent was. So, he decided to go with this, a different program based on the service that the firefighters had performed that year. So, he's asking that this money is moved from the pensions line into the payroll and then I'll need some in social security just to make sure that we're funded while there to cover that. And in the, the legal department, Dan had hired an intern and just moved some money out of his training and travel into the payroll in order to cover the payroll that was paid to that intern.
All right. Any questions? Mrs. Bishop?
I assume the answer is yes, but are we still meeting our pension obligations for those payments?
That pension is, that one in particular, isn't at all anymore. So, I've reserved a little bit of it because we are continuing a life insurance program and so that little bit that'll be reserved, about $5,000, $6,000, we'll pay for our life insurance premium for those firefighters. But the pension for our full-time, and when you're talking about our Wisconsin retirement, that's out of a different line in our budget.
Seeing no questions or comments, let's move to roll call on Resolution 21-73.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passed five to zero.
All right, thank you. So, that wraps up council business. We are now in recommendations for future agenda items. Any suggestions or comments here? Yes, Mrs. Bishop?
Mill Pond.
Mill Pond?
I think it's got to be on the agenda sometime, yeah.
All right.
Please, thank you.
Any other comment, questions? Composting. Is that coming up here soon on, on the agendas? It's nothing, nothing planned there, okay.
Yeah, nothing.
I know that's a hot, a hot topic.
Yeah, internally, it's a hot topic, but we haven't gotten to the point where we're ready to come to council with anything.
Okay. Anything else? Any other comments? Seeing none. The meeting stands adjourned at 9:36. Thank you.